Can I have everybody's attention? I'm going to start. Thank you for your attendance. This is not the Public Works Supervisor for the City of Newcastle. This presentation is fairly long with a lot of points to be made. In the interest of time, we've placed paper and pen on the table. If you can write down your questions and ask them at the end, because we may cover what you question you have later in the presentation. We're here to discuss a rate analysis prepared by Mr. Carl Brown. We're getting great rates. This is a fairly comprehensive detailed report with a plan to completely restructure our rates, not just a rate analysis. We did discuss the needs and why we, why the rates need to be, we will be discussing why we need the rates to increase and why we are where we are. The council contracted Carl Brown with getting great rates to analyze the city's water, sewer, and solid waste or garbage rates. Can you hear me better?
Yeah.
Okay. This was a fairly complex project. It took about 10 months worth of time. Carl Brown has done over 385 analyses throughout his years. I first met Carl Brown, and I believe Councilman Owens has too, at the Wyoming Association of Rural Water Systems a few years back. Council myself agree with Carl that the information needs to be out to the public and transferred, but information is very important. Couple of quotes Carl has on the subject. We are willing to share this with whoever wants, via email or electronically, give it to you for free. The printed copies we have, due to the length of the report, because it's 173 pages long, we'd ask that we collect a little bit of money just to recover the cost of paper. Everyone wants to know what the bottom line of the, of the subject is, in other words, rates. The only bottom line we really have is we're at the end where infrastructure is useful life. Because of past events, this council is forced to make difficult decisions. There were several puzzle pieces involved in creating this report, including the capital improvements plan, debt service plan, and equipment replacements. As I said, this project took 10 months. We had two major changes during this project. Couple of the rate change, a couple of the changes dealt with our funding agencies changing their rules. There are a lot of parts to this rate set, also building the plans for the near and for our future. We looked at anything that would cost significant amounts of money, including our, we reviewed our operations and maintenance, focused heavily on the capital improvements plan and projects, as well as a plan to replace equipment. We discussed at length all the funding options that were available to us. Within the plan, we did plan to Oliver Pump Station and Control Station replacements. These part, a lot of these parts are fairly expensive. For an example, in 2020, we replaced a valve that been in service since 1968. Valve shouldn't have changed in 30 years. It was much longer than that. Valve now, valve bearing costing is $23,000 for replacement. We reviewed our vehicles, inner water, sewer, garbage. We planned their replacements, what year they need, we planned to replace them and how much we planned to spend on for the next 10 years. Any of these spreadsheets, I know it's difficult to read. For some reason, it changed the format when I put them into the PowerPoint. We do have these available for anybody that wants them or want to add. We also planned the solid waste, as I said, with the garbage truck replacement every 10, seven years instead of the current 10 years, primarily because the garbage truck is starting to cost more money in that year seven. We chose infrastructure projects and built them into a capital improvements plan based on their continual failures, their criticality, threatening of personal property, based on past water master plans and water quality issues as well as other factors. We reviewed the funding we can utilize for this. Unfortunately, we did not have a water master plan completed by that time, so some of this will change. You do have a copy of the current capital improvements plan with planned projects. This is the capital improvements plan we have currently and the projects we have for the next 10 years. We took the cost from recent projects and used the numbers to estimate the cost for these projects. Projects include water, sewer, and solid waste or sanitation, also street improvements. This list will likely change over time because of the ever-expanding problem we have. We looked at the current loans we pay. Right now, we're paying $66,802 in debt service. That's primarily for Wyoming Water Development Commission projects with funding through the state revolving fund and loans. Welfare is a recent project we use to fund this, we use this funding for.
Who are you?
Great stuff. I'm the Public Works Supervisor. We looked at our reserve funds and where we needed to be, according to Carl's recommendations for this. During projects, there are unknown issues. Seventh Avenue, for example, we spent two days looking for our water main, our existing water main, because our maps were inaccurate. This creates cost overruns. We can use the reserve funds for that. We also have emergency replacements from time to time that we have to do because of the condition of our pipes. First Avenue, we ended up doing that on First Avenue. Another place we can use our reserve funds is when we come up with unique funding opportunities, like the most recent ARPA funding opportunity, where we had to come up with a 14% match. The ARPA funds were used on Seventh Avenue and the Duff Avenue projects. We did start a water master plan. It's, the presentation was given two weeks ago, three weeks ago. This is just for water. And this is what the state Wyoming Water Development Commission hires as an engineer. They come in, look over our system, find the projects they recommend we do. Some of the information in the water master plan is to replace the existing AC pipe. We come up with a replacement program for it. They recommended doing this in 15 years. There's 82,916 feet of this pipe still in use, or 15.69 miles out of the 32.37 miles of water main in the avenue system. So just under half. The replacement plan they recommended was for 15 year, to be completed within 15 years and for a cost of $2.8 million per year. Aging water infrastructure is the biggest issue. We need to look at our history and see why we are where we are. In 1949, the city of Newcastle purchased enough pipe to replace all of the old undersized steel pipe. They completed this in a very short period of time. But by 1960, they used cast iron pipe to replace the steel pipe. Unfortunately, cast iron does not survive very long on soil type. It corrodes rather quickly. By 1960, they were repairing three leaks per day. The entire system needed to be replaced only after 10 years. They planned to have it be done with this for the next 50. Then they started the, developed their first water master plan in 1962. Then they started a major replacement project after that. They replaced all 82,000 feet of cast iron pipe with AC pipe at that point. AC pipe stands, AC stands for asbestos cement pipe. This pipe, this asbestos is very low content, on about 14%. We do sample for asbestos. We have yet to find any in our system. We're hoping not to. Just to explain what AC stands for. This project they took on, took from 1960. It started in 1960s and finished in the early 1970s. Around 10 years' worth of time to replace everything. We also found out that there were some AC pipe installed in the 1950s prior to major replacement. With our soil type, installation, and stuff like that, the pipe we estimate will survive about 55 years in our system. Sewer system, we couldn't find a lot of records on it. Come to find out, when the city hall was moved from Main Street to where it is now, that happened in 1949. The city commissioner decided none of the records needed to be saved. Throw them all away. So it was very difficult to find out how long our sewer system's been in service. Our inventory, we typically write down 1949 as the, as base year to start with. Our sewer system, we're not sure quite how, what kind of shape it's in yet. There have been a lot of replacements, a lot of repairs that have happened, and they weren't recorded. A good example, we had a sewer line on Timber Avenue crossing the railroad tracks at Sunset. We had a problem with it, needed to replace it. What we did is a cure to place pipe replacement. We went ahead and looked at the rest of the crossings, figuring that this project was going to grow quite a bit. What we found out is they replaced all the others, but not this one. With what happened in 1960s and most of the water system being replaced in 10 years means we're looking at doing a similar thing. They were experiencing three leaks per day in the system back in the, early 60s. Difference between their leaks and ours is cast iron typically create a small pinhole. Our pipes rupture the entire pipe. You'll see sections six foot, eight foot long missing. These are catastrophic failures caused by, primarily by delamination. We average about eight water main breaks per year and about 10 water service line leaks per year. We average about four sewer main repairs per year. Most of our pipe is reaching the end of its useful life. Example, South Road Water Main Break that happened this summer behind the Napa store. Pressure dropped to zero within seconds from Second Avenue to just east of the West End bar. The section, the section of pipe in the picture on the left had 17 cracks and ranging anything from six to 18 inches long. Similar to the pipe we have on display here. Main repair cost $15,000. York Street Water Main Replacer, Water Main Break next to the cemetery, happened at 8:38 PM on a Saturday night. We got, ended up shutting the water off at 10:14 PM. Pressure dropped to zero for all customers east of the cemetery, including the hospital, the manor, three motels, our grade school, over 120 homes. Pipe on display is actually a piece of that water main. The pit failure was again determined to be delaminating AC pipe. The cost of the repair was $16,000. After reviewing our infrastructure and what needed to be done, we looked at different funding opportunities we had. We reviewed all in with Carl Brown and what that would look like when we were done. During the analysis, we did have two major changes. We had to almost revamp the whole night, whole thing because of the changes. SRF is our biggest funding opportunity, which is state revolving fund through the Wyoming Department of Environmental Quality. There's two parts to it. They have principal forgiveness that we can apply for, and then they also have the loan portion that we can get. Principal forgiveness is basically a grant. They just don't call it that. Originally, we, when we started this, we had 50% principal forgiveness, meaning out of a million dollar project, we only had to pay back 500,000. They changed their process and the rules. We dropped to 25% principal forgiveness. Now we have to pay 750,000 on the project, not 500,000. The rest of the loan is, the rest of the funding is a loan from SRF. The SRF is EPA money passed down to states to manage it. They use the SRF to manage it. Another funding source we use heavily is Wyoming Water Development Commission, which we utilize quite frequently in several places on our capital improvements plan. Currently, the funding is 50/50. When we started this process, we didn't find out until about three, four weeks ago during our master plan, that it went from 67/33, where we pay 33% of our project, they pay 67%. Just dropped to 50/50. We lost 70% of our funding three, three, four weeks ago. So there'll be another change before 2026 when we do our first Wyoming Water Development Commission play. Another funding source is Mineral royalties grant. This is a state-funded agency. They're typically small amounts of money. It's a 50% match for the project. We can use this money for emergency replacements if necessary. Few other options. Wyoming, uh, USD World Development. These interest, these loans are similar to the SRF funds, other than the interest is almost double what SRF is. We'd be looking at about 4.9% interest instead of 2.5% through the SRF. They also have other federal requirements that make it more stringent to use. The next item is the ARPA funds. These are unique one-time funding opportunities put out by the Biden administration to spark the, spark the, uh, spark everybody to get back to work after COVID. We did take advantage of this money, and it was 84% paid by them and 14, 16% paid by us. It was a very unique one-time opportunity. We don't know if we're going to get more of this money ever. To continue on with the state revolving fund, because it is one of our largest funding agencies we work with. They base our principal forgiveness and our interest rates off of our average median household income. That is what, what it's all based on. They do look at our rate structure and our rates compare to the national average. Keep in mind that this money they receive is from the US EPA. EPA wants 2% of the system's AMHI to go towards water and sewer. That's your end now.
The new store. This is the one-stop shop. We have a pharmacy. We have a bootlegger's liquor. The deli, the food that you can get at a lunchtime is so amazing. The coffee shop. Certain Friday mornings, there's 30 people sitting here in all these chairs. This is the hub for people to come and visit, have their coffee, have their doughnut. It's amazing what this area has done. Totally amazing.
EPA wants 2% of the system's AMHI to go towards water and sewer. That's your end now. To continue on with Wyoming Water Development Commission giving some more insight to it, they actually funded fully our, our master plan, which worked through to build a capital improvements plan. They only fund transmission mains, storage, and water production such as wells. There are parts of the WWDC projects that will not be funded, such as service lines, staffs, things like that coming off the main. Those will have to be, those are eligible funding, eligible for funding. As I said, the recent funding changed from 67% grant to 50% grant. We essentially, during this project of the rate analysis, set a budget for the next 10 years, including all plant projects, plant replacements, so on and so forth. And Carl set the rates around the budget. We raised rates between, when you're looking at the information in front of you, keep in mind that this is based on the test year. The test year was first, was last full fiscal year we had. So it's based on our '22, '23 budget year, not this last budget year. We have raised rates since then, so this rate increase would end up being smaller. He looked heavily at the affordability index and how this will affect customers. If you notice, we're at 98.8% of the state's average median household income. That greatly affects our funding and what we are capable of giving for grants of low-interest loans. We're still below the national average of 1% for water, sewer, and solid waste rates of the AMHI. We looked at what funds were available for the city. And I don't know if anybody realizes it, but the state statutes, chapter title 15, governs our enterprise funding. In other words, we have to create a fund for water, one for sewer, and one for solid waste. Those are not tax-based, those are rate-based. And they're required to stay solvent during the block. The only part of the infrastructure projects we have planned that tax dollars will be used for is the streets. We cannot use the money to, cannot use tax dollars to replace the water line or the sewer line or pay for solid waste. An example of this, the rodeo shared and street project we have planned, right now is at a $4.2 million project. $1.2 million of that is just the street portion of the project. So we have to use the tax dollars to make up the difference. Just in the street portion of the project. When you're looking at your sheets, you're going to notice that there's Model 3 and 4. People want to know why we didn't start out with 1 and 2. We did. But during the major changes we had to do in rate analysis because of the funding changes, it was easier for Mr. Brown to basically scrap Model 1 and 2 and start completely over with Model 3 and 4. What we're talking about implementing is the Model 3. Model 4 in there, in the actual rate analysis, is based on the cost of the projects going up 50% in the next 10 years. To get into some of Carl's recommendations, Carl's recommending to change the base rate, base service rate, and with no water allowance. Right now, we allow 2,000 gallons for the base rate. This would be in base rate only. If we, if the council decides to do allowance for the 2,000 gallons, we would have to have a rate increase to cover $164,000 to cover the change. Residential sewer that he's recommending. To continue on with the summer months, we do sewer averaging for all residential customers. In other words, we use your winter time usage and bill you for that during the summer, so your irrigation water doesn't get charged out as sewer. Does that make sense? This chart is Table A. It shows the recommended tap fees based on the tap size. Also shows the base charge and the per thousand gallon price within inside-city limits. The next one is for, is Table B. It's for the recommended outside-city limit rates. Table E, apologize. Table E is for the sewer rates. This is what the rates would be changed to for inside-city limits. I know it, in here it has meter type. There's types of rate structures you can build around meter types. Because we only have two different meter types, we opted not to go with rate structure based on the meter type, just on the size of surfaces. Table G is the recommended sanitation or garbage rates. Table 18 is probably the most important table. And as you use more water, you can look at Table 18 and see how much your water bill would average out or would be based on. These, typically it's based on the, on the usage within inside-the-city limits. And anybody that wants these, let us know. We can get this information into your hands. Keep in mind again, the change that he indicates. And the modeled, modeled increase is based on the '22, '23 year, not this last year. Table 18 for the sewer. And Table 18 for the sanitation. As I said, if you want prints of this, it's not a problem. Let us know and we can get it to you. To recap, what Carl Brown is recommending. Our current base rate is $19.50 for 2,000 gallons. The proposed base rate would be $33.82 with no gallons allowed. Our current per thousand rate for water is $4.60 per thousand. Would increase to $4.79 per thousand. He speaks quite a bit on the increasing, on being able to increase the rates and doing small increases per year instead of large ones over time. To recap the sewer, he recommends continuing with the sewer averaging to where you're not billed for the irrigation water in your sewer, in the sewer system, because it's not being used. Currently, our base rate is $21.53 for 2,000 gallons. The proposed rate would be $16.30, $63 per, where with no gallons allowed. Our current rate is $6 per thousand. It would go to $3.88 per thousand. Sanitation or solid waste currently for one gallon, 195 gallon container, dumped one time per week, is $20.10 per month. The new rate for the one gallon, 195 gallon container dumped one time per week will be a charge of $32.19 per month. Carl recommended the reserve accounts and what we needed, what our target was over the 10-year period. These are the target amounts he recommends for the different, different enterprise accounts. As I said, this money can be used for stuff like First Avenue emergency line replacement, project overruns, and unique funding opportunities, being able to step in and tell the state, we can spend your money, let's have it. We looked at the debt service and what would happen to it over the next 10 years. Currently, we pay $66,802, 61 cents in debt service. Over the next 10 years, it would increase to 1.6 million. We'd be paying in loans over here. All of our loans are for a term of 20 years. All of our loans are for a term of twenty years. Percentage of increase of the total water bill. As you can see, the numbers up there. It would be essentially an eighteen point two percent increase over the current rates. The average water, water customer uses six thousand seven-hundred and thirteen gallons per gallon per month. So for an average user, be a twenty-one dollars and seventy-six increase, dollar increase per month. Spent quite a bit of time setting this proposed budget for the next year, for the next ten years. The infrastructure budget was the largest at forty-six million dollars. The only, the only way to increase the budget is either either increase the rates or receive grant funding. But with a grant fund, we would, like one we recently received from MRG for our 2025 improvements project, we would turn around and roll that back into another project, so we'd get another one done. Biggest takeaways after doing this process is the need to plan. And the council understands that. We need to plan out as far as we can and build, build our rates around that. The need for reevaluation, small increases each year, rather than one large increase every ten years. Reevaluate our projects early in the budget process. We tried to plan as much as we possibly could, but there are certain things we're just not aware of yet. Despite this perfect example of why we're talking about this. Questions? If you wouldn't mind, for the purpose of the video, we'd ask that you come up to the podium and use the microphone and ask your questions. Is that? Any question you have about this?
Is, the rate, are the rates, the rate heights you were giving, those are the small increases every year versus a large increase every four years? I mean, the sewer from twenty dollars to thirty-two percentage-wise, that's not small. Is, is that what you're counting as small?
No, this, this rate increase would be, would get us to a point where we have a baseline minimum. The rate increases after this would be four percent per year, is what he's recommending, with a reevaluation of five years, or twenty percent increase over the next five years.
So thirty? So thirty-two dollars right away? And then additional four percent each year for five years?
Yes, the thirty-two, sanitation, I think is what you're talking about. It's thirty-two dollars and eighty, eighty-two cents over the, oh, it doesn't, that's why. Over the nineteen-fifty that we pay now.
So that's fifty percent increase from twenty to thirty-two.
For the base.
Fifty percent increase for the next year, and then an additional, what did you say, four percent per year?
He recommends four percent per year.
For five years, so that's an additional twenty percent?
Yes, that's how we, that's how we fund this, that's how we fund the projects.
I wouldn't say it's small.
You're right, it's not. But at some point, we have to deal with this. This is a perfect example of what we're talking about. Our pipe is all looking like this. In the last two years, we have not dug up a break that did not look like this. The only part of this pipe that's structural integrity, has a structural integrity, is this little part down here at the bottom that's dark. The rest of this pipe doesn't hold anywhere. South Road and York Street breaks are the perfect example of why, and this is all we're seeing. Our pipe is getting to the age it needs to be replaced. This is beginning stages of trying to come up with a plan to replace it.
So talking about what Barb said, this goes a little different than that even, because the first rate increase that I was involved with was in, it was two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen. That one was, I think, around a fifteen percent raise, that's what I kind of remember. So then, at that time, Ray James stood up and told everybody, well, you know what? This is, this increase is going to be so significant that we're not going to have to increase water rates for many years to come. That was that day. Then, what, two, three years later, he decided, I think two years later, he said, well, you know what? We need to have a rate increase. And then that kind of got tabled or something, it went away. So then the next year, there wasn't another rate increase. Then that fiasco that happened last year was a beauty. People and, and, we were just talking about that. People aren't watering anything, they can't. In my neighborhood, in my street, I live in Frontier, and in my, my block, there are seven homes. Three homes have, are still watering their grass. One home is pretty much giving up water, their grass, the rest of them are brown. It's because people are scared to death. And when you're talking about, I especially love the reserve. I don't have a reserve. The, the people that are on social security don't have a reserve. How do you expect them to pay to justify that? In addition, in addition, so, now tell me if I misunderstand this. This says, in, this is a sanitation piece. And it says that there's nine-hundred-and-seventy-nine homes that are gonna go from twenty to thirty-four, and it's a seventy-three percent increase. There's not, well, there's one, I think. But, but set nine-hundred-and-seventy, yeah, nine-hundred-and-seventy-nine homes are gonna have a seventy-three percent increase. And the next one down, it has ninety homes, and it has a minus-five increase. What is that about? I got a whole bunch of this stuff that I'm wondering about, and there's no reason. And the water increase, what are you doing? I understand that, honest to God, I do understand that. There's, there, I can be more blunt because I, I don't, I, I can't. They were, they were given a bad deal. There, there was a time in Newcastle's history where things were not being done, or they were being done based on who wanted what done at the time.
In addition to the weekly printed version of the newsletter journal, we also promote our community and share important information on our award-winning website, newslj.com, and in our weekly email newsletter, New Canow. We also connect with readers through various social media platforms and invite you to check us out on Facebook, Twitter, and Instagram. You can even take a look at a recent meeting of the city council, school board, or county commission on our YouTube channel. We do hope that you will go to newslj.com and subscribe today, and we look forward to making all of our great content available to you. But regardless of your level of support, we thank you from the bottom of our hearts for doing your part to preserve a free and independent local press.
There, there was a time in Newcastle's history where things were not being done, or they were being done based on who wanted what done at the time, and cut projects. I understand that, I knew that then, and it's still that way now. But people cannot afford this. I don't care that the medium-income area is, is sixty thousand dollars. There's very few people here that get made sixty thousand dollars.
I understand, unfortunately, our funding agencies are the ones that govern that.
Like I said, you know, the council needs to think this over and think it over. Well, I understand that there, there's improvements that gotta be made, I understand that. But I don't think, like the Seventh Street project, it was a big project and stuff, I think. But did we have to go through all that? Did it have to go back to, you know, does it have to be that? I've seen other places in town where there's been cuts in the road and there's been projects that have been fixed. So why can't that happen during a time when every other thing that is, is, the inflation is just crazy? And now you want it? You couldn't have done it when, when it wasn't like that? And so, so on that, on this table he's talking about, about the twenty percent water bill, and then, you know, it's gonna go up another twenty percent over the next ten years. Since two thousand eighteen till now, that means that, that had to be up at least sixty-five, seventy percent. I can't afford that, who can? There's people that work at coal mines that don't water their grass because they're not, they're not willing to pay those bills. Newcastle's a shambles because of all of the brown stuff. People are letting their trees die because this is going on and they want more? I don't know, you better think about that a lot. And, and I was really hoping the younger people would talk about this, but get ahold of your council members and make your feelings known. When I first went to the first meeting that I attended in two thousand eighteen or nineteen, whichever one it was, I was the only one there. What they said to me at that time was, is that, you know, we didn't get any phone calls about this. The council member said, that we didn't get any phone calls about this. You know, you're the only one here, doesn't matter, obviously. So I think that there is pressure in numbers, and I think that that pressure needs to be applied because obviously, they're, they're at it again, they just had an increase last year, now they want another one. Anyway, that's what I needed to say about it.
Any other comments or questions?
On a fixed income, fruition can always spin so much. And it roughly cost me about thirteen hundred dollars a month. And then it's nothing extra, and that is just from water, rent, insurance, and everything. And I'm on a very fixed income. And if it goes up every year for the next three years, like it has been, I'm not gonna be able to pay for my rent. I ramped it up a hundred dollars last year, and it's probably gone to another fifty this year, mainly due to the water increase and so over and whatnot. But we've gotta do something to get to either more people, more businesses, in Newcastle, with the help of hell with that. Just get real tense for everybody. And there's a lot of elderly people in town here that's going to do the same thing. Thank you.
I have a couple of questions of, how many water wells does the city now maintain and that are working?
Five.
And are those flowing wells?
Yes.
All of them?
Yes.
So it's not a question of shortage of water, right?
Correct.
Also, how much, with this raise you're recommending, how much money will that, pay the city each month, how much extra?
I do not have that number right away, ready. I apologize.
Okay, if it continues to rise, I mean, I, I try my darndest to keep my yard green. And the last one we had last year was a kind of a shocker, but I still managed to keep watering, but we, and I haven't driven around town, but I get around a little bit, and there are a lot of brown lawns. So your, your hope of producing this extra money is all contingent on the fact that the people are gonna continue to water the way they're watering now, correct?
Yeah, it's part of the assumption. Part of, part of it is, Mr. Brown changed from adding more money to the per-thousand price and went back to more base rate price. So we have a stable, stable level of net revenue.
So if, if, if we have an additional amount of people that quit watering because they can't pay it, the only amount your increase is gonna produce is the, is the base increase?
That depends on the, in the future. That's something that has to be reevaluated each year.
Okay, but I, I don't know, I'm, it, it hurts me to look around town and see the number of, of brown lawns. And as someone mentioned before, it won't be long after that, and the trees will start dying too, and, and I hate to see that. So I hope the, the board thinks long and hard about making too much where people can't, can't pay our bills. But this is a, I don't know, the percentage of elderly people, but we got an elderly community here, I think, to a certain degree. Thank you.
Okay, I'm not good at this, so, I appreciate you having these words and all of your words. I'm on a fixed income, and I have terminal cancer, so I'm trying to figure out, do I not go get my treatments? Or do I continue to pay the high gas prices? I've cut back on everything in my budget. And now we can do this. I worked in school finance for twenty-five years. I understand fund accounting. I understand accounting, governmental accounting. And in my opinion, this has been mismanaged and no planning for a long time. And so because of lack of planning on the city's part, we all have to flip the bill. I don't think that's fair. You know, I mean, we trusted you and we elected you to council. We expect you to make sure things are managed properly. And so you wait, and you wait, and you do, you put off, and you do what you think you're doing. But then we're all gonna hurt from that. I'm one of those lawns next to Kathy that's brown in the front. I do water my flowers in the back, because I like to have a few things that I can enjoy in my old age and dealing with what I'm dealing with. But I'm not alone here. You all have families, you have young families, you're struggling. We're all struggling. And I agree with the fact that you wait until now to do this, and that you have, your only big plan is we're just gonna keep getting more money and getting more money and getting more money. But we're not gonna manage it like we should. We're gonna keep building storage tanks. I think we're trying to keep up with the refinery. But we don't have a quality of water. The APA has told us that. Sometimes my water smells so bad I won't drink it. Well, go buy bottled water. So let me see, I gotta pay for water, and then I gotta pay for bottled water. And at my age, and what I'm dealing with health-wise, I gotta haul that into the house. We deserve better than that as citizens. And I'm tired of the government, whether it be local, your county, or state, or federal. Nobody cares anymore. Just shut up and write the check. Now, I understand that you need fixing. But to me, like the lack of planning, we're, we only deal with it when it breaks. We should have been dealing with it for a long time, so that doesn't break. So I'm disappointed. I'm disappointed in our city government. But you know, they're gonna do this anyway, they can do what they want. But I just felt that I had to come and say something. And I appreciate all of you, I'm really excited to see as many of you as is here. And I'd also, you know, there, and I won't say that they've done everything wrong. You know, Mayor, I have been impressed by the fact that you've kept us abreast of what's being fixed in the town. We never knew that before. And I think that's great. But now, we've come down to the point where these are huge rate increases. And nobody really can afford them. And I'm just really disappointed that it had to come to this, this far to get here. So, anyway.
I would like that answer then really quick, sorry. As you said, it was two thousand seventeen, eighteen, the last raise increase? I'm, I'm not a hundred percent. Okay, so, so.
No, no, that was not the last increase. That was the first increase that I could keep involved with. That was not the last increase, that was the first. And then I want to say.
That was the first. And then I want to say it was about three years later and went up another twelve or thirteen or fifteen percent. I remember that one too. That, so that would be what, like nineteen or two thousand twenty-one? I'm not sure of the years. And now there we are again. Look what you did last year. You can't hear me? Nobody's ever said that to me. Oh, never. Anyway, so what I meant was is that there's been three increases since that time. And, and two of them were, I think one might have been thirteen percent in that neighborhood. One was fifteen percent. And the response was when that, that increase, when I went to the council for that meeting, they said, "Well, you know, we have to be fiscally responsible." Because I said, as a matter of fact, I pointed out to them, I said, "You know, you want a fifteen percent increase and people on social security at that time, that year got a three percent increase." Well, we need to be fiscally responsible. That's not really what you need to be. You know, you've gotta find a way to, to be able to help. Now, another thing that, that makes me mad about the city, I'm glad you gave me this. The other thing that makes me mad about the city is, did you know that LIAP is applicable to water line, to water now? Did you know that? LIAP, LIAP is the government subsidy, um, for people that are, that are low income. Water is now, you are able to get water in LIAP. I've asked them online several times to discuss that with the public and they never have. But the last I knew, when I say, I believe that's still true, LIAP can also cover it. You know, they help with energy bills. They have changed also and they can help with water bills too. That needs to be put into the public so the public understands that there is help out there for them. And nobody's done that except, well, you know, one who talks too much. Anyway, that, but that, so the first increase, that was the, the year that I, I was involved with it the first time. Then the second time I just, I figured they were gonna just increase it. And the only thing that I disagree with Judy, wherever she's at. The only thing I disagree with Judy is they don't get to do that. It's not, why is this, "Well, you're gonna do what you're gonna do." Wait a minute. This is affecting people's lives and a lot of people's lives. You have a small spattering, but there's people that honestly believe, as a matter of fact, it was on, on, online today. They're gonna do what they're gonna do. That we have no choice in this matter. We have no say in this matter and that is not true.
Did you wanna add anything that she said previously? Okay, so, yes, it was looked at over a year ago and there was a lot of, um, frustration with not only the council vote, the citizens as well. And I believe that motion was rescinded on the water aspect, but not the sewer aspect. Um, so you still see part of that increase on your bill as of right now. But unfortunately, because of lack of planning from forefathers, um, we are in the position that we're in now and we don't have many choices to choose from to make the decisions that we have to make. So that's why we're having the town hall today. Um, these are recommendations by this Carl Brown. It's not anything that the council has made any motions on at this time. We do have another town hall in October. I'll get that, you know, the date and time on. It's another Tuesday. Um, I think it's after our meeting on the seventeenth. Uh, the fifteenth at six, we're having another town hall. So, um, you know, keep these questions coming. And that LIAP that you were talking about, I know they have it available at the counter at, um, City Hall, but we will get that information out for you.
Why don't you tell the public that? Like, there's, I mean, this, like, some of this could have been avoided in something, but they can't afford their water.
Right.
Could, could have had that information. Some of this could have been avoided and nobody did anything. I think I asked twice, "Why don't you say something about that?" And it just never happened.
Well, we'll make sure it, it happens right away. I can guarantee, I'll guarantee that for you, okay?
I'm not any good at this either. I forgot some of the things I was gonna say, but, uh, I'm, I just agree with lots of insist here. I, I think a lot of people are gonna quit watering lawns. My lawn was browner than it's ever been. I've lived where I live twenty-four years. I have just watered way less this summer and, and, uh, I mean, if you're planning on getting revenue from people watering, I, I think you're gonna lose out on that. Uh, and I, I went to a meeting last fall when this went way up and I felt like nobody really, there weren't very many of us there and I felt like, uh, never really listened to, you know, or, or, uh, done anything about it. It seemed more like when businesses started complaining, like the motel and stuff in town. Seems like when they started, when they went back to like the state rate or whatever you went to there. Uh, and that helped considerably because my bill, like last August, it, it doubled. And I'm like, there's no way, and it seems like, and hell, I'm not gonna pay that much. It was like three hundred and fifty dollars. I'm not gonna pay the city three hundred and fifty dollars. And I mean, I know that, I know that isn't all the water my lawn, but I'm not gonna pay that much money to water my lawn and, uh...
Once it starts slow, but boy, by mid-season, you see something. And by the end of the year, they're the scary team. Nobody wants to play. Those are more fun than the teams that come in that you know are gonna dominate and they are dominating. You know, you're almost afraid to lose when you've got really, really good teams and high expectations.
Oh, for sure.
Those are fun seasons. Is, is there that potential in Doby Sports this year for some of those programs?
I think it's possible. Um, you know, coming down into three A this year is, is gonna scare quite a few of us old three Aers. But we do have that potential for growth. We are not coming in at the beginning of the season at our highest potential, which frankly, you don't want. You want your team to grow. You want your team to develop and then get to that point by the end of the season to have that shot at postseason play.
I'm not gonna pay that much money to water my lawn and, uh, another thing is like garbage. I mean, my gosh, it's just me and my wife. Uh, a lot of times we have at the max two bags of garbage. Uh, I can sure of my neighbor. I mean, like, uh, I'm sure the neighbor I have and I could easily get all our garbage in one of them containers. I mean, uh, it's not near full. It's not even half full, you know? Uh, and another thing I wanted to comment on was a few months ago, I know you guys were talking about getting a new, uh, just doesn't contain the water and sort of garbage, but in a way it does. You're spending money on this, uh... You were talking about getting a new mower, like over at the cemetery and I can't remember what brand you have there, but, uh, it was gonna be like twenty-four thousand dollars. I've got a zero-turn Cub Cadet and I paid thirty-two hundred for it. Right now, I think at lawn mowers, you can get them for like thirty-five, thirty-six hundred dollars. Four grand at the most. You can buy six of them things for the price of that mower. And I'll guarantee you, you are not gonna wear six of them out before you wear that brand you got. I know it's a commercial mower, but, uh, hell, they all got basically the same mower in them, you know? And, uh, I mean, I think there's some things you can, you can look at and save a lot more on than, than you do, you know? Uh, I, I don't know. I just see ways, you know? Another comment, I guess, I was up there, I was up at my place, this water line, and one thing, uh, that water, I mean, if we're in a, you know, paying this much for water, that water ran for a good two hours and fifteen minutes, if not two and a half hours out of a, what is that, a six-inch line you say? I looked that up. I mean, I know it isn't flowing as much, but an open-in six-inch water main and there's a hundred pounds pressure, sometimes a hundred and ten, uh, that will flow like fifty thousand gallons in an hour. So that flowed for over two hours, over a hundred thousand gallons. Shit, you can go up there now. It's been four or five weeks ago. That is just nice and green. It's beautiful up there. It, it hasn't seen water since. I mean, just a couple of little rains we've had. You know, but, uh, I wish my lawn was that green, but, uh, and I wish I had that water to use on my lawn, but I don't. Uh, that, hell, that, that frightened me two summers. I don't know, but anyway, uh, I think we, well, my point was, the guy that came up there, I called it in, like, I don't know, twenty, thirty minutes after we lost water and, uh, the lady said the guy was headed up there and, and, uh, it still took him like thirty, forty-five minutes to get there. Should he's out, uh, they were out of water on Salem Avenue. That's just like a block over. And, uh, it still took him thirty to forty-five minutes and I told her the leak was right by the armory. And, uh, then the guy gets there and he has no valve wrench. I mean, my God, that's like a fire truck, truck going to a fire without water. I mean, you're going to, to a water leak and you don't have a valve wrench with you? I mean, we can get more efficient in that stuff than we are. It's ridiculous, you know? Uh, I guess that's about all I can say, right? I do appreciate letting us know, uh, about things like this, uh, meetings and they are helpful, uh... Uh, I guess another thing I questioned again, I don't know if this was a rumor, but I, I heard, uh, like when we had this meeting here last year after everybody was complaining that, I don't know, it was this guy you're talking about, but, uh, whoever you had a meeting with at one time, I didn't go to the meeting, but one of the guys that did said, "What you guys pulled here was illegal." Even, it wasn't even legal to do that. But I've never heard a word about that. I don't know if it's true or not, you know, but, uh, that, that was the rumor I heard, but anyway, that's all I can say.
Can you answer his question, please? What's the process for raising rates?
I didn't hear you.
What's the process?
In order to raise rates, the council has to review the rates. At that point, there was three readings. Went through the three readings and at the end of the third reading, that's when the rates increase.
I think what they're asking you is, is it legal to raise the rates at times? Is it rated at that time? Is that legal?
Yes. According to, I mean, the city attorney was, was talking about it as well. He didn't have a problem with it. Um, there are other communities that are doing the same thing throughout Wyoming.
Is that without public notice or?
What's that?
Is that, can you do that without public notice in advance or?
What's that?
Can you do it without public notifying the public?
It was at the council meeting and it isn't posted in the paper every week.
But not posted, the, the side of those ratings? Not posted, that they didn't post that? Is it in the, I saw?
Yes, it's in the minutes.
I think I read it. In, in the paper?
I didn't know. I was just asking.
No, the, we, I mean, honestly, being down at the SLIB meetings and looking at the funding issues and talking with the state, there are places that are raising it even more than what we are to be able to fund the projects.
Yeah, but you're already above the state average.
We're close to the state average. That's based on twenty-twenty-two's. So if, I know Lander, one of the last SLIB meetings, they asked him to raise the rates in order to get more funding. It's, it's something that happens unfortunately all across the U.S.
This new rate can be more than the state average over time?
It'll be right around the state average.
Lower than the state average? So the average, my name's Tyrell Lowens. I'm a, I'm a sitting member of the council. And, uh, I've been actively involved with some of the stuff that's going on with our rates. I'm on the Water and Sewer Committee and I was also on the City Shop for eight years and some change. Uh, I've been out in the middle of the night working on our broken water mains when it was six degrees out and I was freezing my tail off. Flooded people's houses. Uh, I've been out and rotted sewers, uh, that people backed up in their basements. So the, the failing infrastructure that we have in our community right now is a problem and it has been for a long time. Uh, it's unfortunate that we have to increase our rates to try to catch up from years and years of mismanagement. So, um, you know, this council, since I've been on the council, I inherited these problems. I was elected to try to fix some of these problems. So, I mean, Mr. Johnson, I've been on your water breaks in your driveway, um, three or four times since I worked for the City Shop. Wash it below in your driveway and you're a saint, by the way, because he put up with that for years uh, while it was washing out his whole yard and, and blowing up in his driveway. But now he has a good PVC line and, yep, knock on wood, it's, it's in there and he's not gonna have to worry about it again for a long time. Uh, Seventh Avenue, uh, I was in the street on Seventh Avenue, uh, three times myself uh, when that line just blew because it's old concrete as fast as pipe, you know? Um, shut the water line down a little too fast and boom, it blows. And then all those people on that street are out of water and it's a mess, right? Uh, we have old clay tile sewers in this community. Uh, they are infiltrated with roots. I've been engulfed in our manholes. Um, I've had to wait around in everybody's, uh, stuff, you know? And we need to fix it. So, um, we're looking at a rate increase this time. We're, we're right now, we're at nineteen fifty for a base rate for the water. Uh, we're gonna possibly increase it to thirty-two dollars. So there's a thirteen dollar increase on the base rate. Uh, I, I addressed some of the issues too, on what, you know, since we've been on council. Um, you know, we, we mishandled the rates. I, I approached the council at that time and I told them, "Hey, everybody, uh, we should probably fire a, or, fine, we should probably hire a third-party contractor to take care of this because we all admit that we're not good at crunching the numbers." These rates, it's a very complicated process. Uh, there's a lot to it. And we all kind of admitted that we, we didn't know how to do the crunch it. So at that time, everybody looked at the cost of the rate analysis and they said, "Uh, we don't wanna spend that kind of money on a rate analysis." So we went at it alone. And, uh, yes, all of the process was handled appropriately. Um, uh, we did, we gave the ordinance three readings before we implemented the, the rate increase. Um, it was posted in the newspaper and, uh, it, it met all of the state statutes for, for public notice. So, but then nobody pays attention. Nobody comes to our council meetings. Uh, there's nobody in there. But then after the rate increase took effect, then we had a council chamber full of angry people and rightly so because, uh, it caught you guys when you're still irrigating your lawns and it was, it was a large increase. Our price per thousand was too high and people got blindsided with large bills. So, uh, you know, then, you know, September hit. People weren't watering as much. Uh, at that public meeting, uh, we, some of the, the community members that were there said, "You know, maybe you could put it out on Facebook or you could, um, you know, actually send it out where people are gonna look at it." So I believe that, uh, we've started putting everything out on Facebook and trying to make it more accessible for people. Uh, then a couple of months went by and I, I got a couple of complaints from, uh, some of my constituents that said, "Hey, um, you know, everybody else quit watering, but we're in the service industry. We have hotels in town. Uh, we have, uh, you know, like the Weston County Health Services, places that consistently use water uh, around, you know, twelve months out of the year. You're using water because you have to wash, uh, sheets. You have to wash clothes. You have to take care of facilities." So, uh, at that time, I made a motion that we lower the price per thousand to the, the state average of four dollars and sixty-three cents, uh, per thousand. And then that kinda took care of everything for a little bit. It was contingent on us completing this rate study. So, uh, the thing is, is you guys are right. Uh, the city has been mismanaged for years. We've been through multiple councils. People haven't, I, I give our council a lot of cred- lot of credit. We have to tackle this uncomfortable problem, but we we now have worked with the Public Works Director and he got the level one water study done. We have a capital improvements plan. We're we're trying to plan infrastructure replacements that are gonna affect everybody's life in this town. I mean, you're gonna have clean water coming out of the tap, your waste is gonna be taken care of. And then on the solid waste note, we are running into two reclamation projects. I'm also on the sanitation committee. The reclamation of landfill number one, which is left by the gun range, that's a legacy project that has been up there, you know, since what, the nineteen seventies, Greg?
Actually, that landfill started nineteen twenty-two.
Oh, what, I know the closure.
Which, which one?
Landfill one.
Landfill book one closure was nineteen eighty-four. It had started, they started that landfill in nineteen twenty-two. And the cost of that remediation project was estimated to be three-point-five million dollars.
So we have to have a way to pay for that. I mean, it's it's not something we'd wanna do. It's a, it's a whole legacy landfill that's been sitting up there pumping gross water out of the ground and and it's it's a problem and and then we have to mitigate it. It's not something we wanted to do. And landfill number two is closing. So, you know, the solid waste district started and now, you know, we, what we, we still have to take care of the mitigation process for the two landfills that we have.
So if I may speak on the landfill two closure project, they're estimating between four and six million dollars we can handle is what that project is gonna cost. We're on the hook for twenty-five percent of it. There has been some money set back, but not quite enough to do with the whole closure.
So in a nutshell, we have to have adequate rates to pay for our infrastructure. Water is life. Fifty percent of our infrastructure is concrete, asbestos pipe, and it's it's on the tipping point. Fifty-five years, now all of the lines that are turning fifty-five are blown. So, I mean, that affects everybody. And then another thing is, the way the process works is you have a street, right? Everybody complains about the streets. Nobody likes the streets around here, do you? Does anybody like the streets?
Seventh Avenue.
So, yeah, you like Seventh Avenue. When you fix the infrastructure underneath, then the funding pays for a ten-foot street cut. So we're paying for a third of your street with the water and sewer projects. So water and sewer, you got twenty feet of your street covered and recapped and then we have to make up the cost of the last bit of, or ten feet of street. So as we go through the community and we improve it, we replace the water and sewer, which I was, another thing is, when I was working for the City Shop, and I'll end here promptly after this, but I said, you know, if I was on the city council, I wouldn't be doing this stuff right now. But I used a lot of other colorful language, you know? And so when I, when I resigned from the city, I had, I went around my friends and I had them write me in. So then I got on the general election ballot and I got voted in to be under council and continue to serve as a, as a member of the council. But, you know, common sense stuff, if you're gonna replace the water line under a street, then you need to replace the sewer while you're there. And then you put a nice robe on top and then you move on. So anyway, I appreciate all your your time. It is good to see so many people out here, but this isn't a witch hunt. We, we didn't want to inherit the mismanagement that we got, but it it's here and we're trying to do a better job. So, thank you.
If I may.
The new store. This is the one-stop shop. We have a pharmacy. We have a bootlegger's liquor. The deli, the food that you can get at a lunchtime is so amazing. The coffee shop. Certain Friday mornings, there's thirty people sitting here in all these chairs. This is the hub for people to come and visit, have their coffee, have their doughnuts. It's amazing what this area has done. Totally amazing.
And we're trying to do a better job. So, thank you.
If I may, if you want to know about the water rates in Wyoming, Wyoming Water Development Commission puts out a study every, every two years. Last one was two thousand twenty-two. We should be getting our questionnaires here shortly for twenty-four. This has everybody's water-only rates for the state of Wyoming, the ones that did report it. You go on Wyoming Water Development Commission's website, you can find this. You can look at rates evolved from everybody all over the state. I will warn you, the rates that are in red, we're not updated, but there is a, there is a study for it. Unfortunately, there's no study for the sewer services and sewer braces. There is one starting to float around for sanitation.
Thank you. As much of you know, my husband and I don't live in town. So really, this is just a comment made as a person who owns a business in town. And then my husband's mother still has a home in town. And our question is, she doesn't use any water and she knows, doesn't use a garbage. So we get charged the minimal. Is there any way that that minimal, like a thousand gallons, that could be donated in some way to people who can, who can afford it? And I've asked that question a couple of times. I don't know what the legal legalities are to it, but it's just kind of interesting that we don't use any of it. But we do use the streets and we, by the way, Troy and I think cell summon is wonderful. So thank you.
So I just have a couple of questions as far as everybody's brought up, you know, fixed income, low income. Do you have through the city a relief plan for those that they could apply showing that they have a fixed income or they're low income to have a reduced rate? Or is that in the rate study percentage-wise where they could have fifty percent of the increase lessened towards them?
There is a portion, he speaks about in the, in his model grades, he does account for people of fixed incomes. Typically, they use around two thousand gallons or less. He does show that the affordability index would be affordable for them as well.
So they still get, everybody gets the blanket and increase no matter what?
Yes, unfortunately.
What is our percentage in Newcastle for low income or fixed income? Do you know?
That I'm not aware of. I could, you're off the top of my head.
Is there a way, like, I was just saying, to create a fund for those to at least apply and get somewhat of a credit back during the year to help with that as relief?
That's more of a question for the council to entertain. We can definitely bring that up amongst the committee members, seeing, seeing what they would have to say.
I just thought of something else. On our bill within the last year, there's a new category in the bill and it's a fixed rate. I think it's eight dollars a month and it's called infrastructure, I think. Isn't that for fixing pipes and things? That's what I thought this added item on our bill was for, was fixing stuff.
Yes, unfortunately, it is not enough to replace a water main. The cost increases we've seen recently, it just isn't enough funding for that purpose. Trying to remember how much money that it.
So will that coming out of our bill?
Yes, that will, that will not be out of the bill. That will be built into the rates.
Okay, so based on what Carl's survey said, doubling the bill on the seniors and low income is not a major increase?
It would show an effect, yes. Based on the AMHI, we would go to a point nine percent. And if I remember correctly, I want to say it was a point seven based on the use of two thousand gallons.
Yeah, because based on the two thousand gallons, according to this, it's gonna double.
Honestly, if you wanna get, if you wanna come look at it, we can, we can look at it. Like I said, anybody that wants to see this, let me know. We have a list. If you want to see the, if you want the study, if you want it free, give us an email, we can send it to you. We can also answer any questions. Unfortunately, I did not have that question. I didn't think about that question very well. I did not have it prepared.
I could copy of that twenty-four, which is like I said, like I told you, this two and a half.
Yep. And there are other, there's a hundred and seventy-three pages to this. So there are tons more charts, more graphs. It's, it's pretty complicated for me. It's full of all kinds of information. Like I said, keep in mind, when you review these, we'd be working on the model number threes, not the model number fours.
Okay, and then one more thing. With all the decreases, okay, this is the twenty-four, uh, three, with all the decreases in the solid waste, why can't those rates stay the same and the money go to the water and sewer?
Because we cannot use sanitation money for water and sewer. We can only use money, money out of the sanitation enterprise fund for sanitation. We can only use sewer enterprise funds for sewer and we can only use water enterprise funds for water.
I'm sorry?
Yeah, no, it's not a problem. It's concerning the funding, the SRF has two different funds we apply for. One is drinking water, which is drinking water. We actually, like on Seventh Avenue, we replace the water and the sewer, but we actually have to put in applications, one for sewer, one separate one for water in order to receive funds for both, both of them.
I'm curious, as, because I've heard it mentioned a couple of times tonight, maybe three times, that's past mass poor management of the city infrastructure. At what point did you all notice that it was mismanaged and you knew we had this problem? And, because we've heard, you know, and I'm not pointing finger at you guys, but we've heard from politician after politician that it was somebody else's fault and they did a bad job. And so what I'm curious of is, when did you know? And why is it taking place now? And how did it not take place sooner? I'm not accusing you, I'm curious.
A lot of it was based on recent digs we did in water mains that we looked at and different repairs that we were working on, including this one here. The last two years, pipes didn't look like that four years ago. Recently, this is all we find, this one, when we dig up a pipe, we find this break, broken up asbestos. These cracks are the problem and that's the most recent issue. We're dealing with something different than we did four years ago.
I'd like to answer the question mark. So I knew that the city's infrastructure was mismanaged when I started to work at the City Shop in, what is that, twenty, twenty-eleven? I mean, we dig into the streets, we'd be working on a water main break. None of our pipe was bedded. It was a mess under there. Then we're looking at clay tile sewer that's cracked and has roots growing through it. And there's a, there's a rule in Public Works, I learned about it at Rural Water Conference, said that if you come back to the same problem more than three times, then that leg of line should be slated for replacement. So, I mean, there's a, there's a street over on MacArthur, we'd go and put a new banding, a band clamp in on that street almost half a year. We'd go back and then about ten feet up, we'd stick another band clamp on it. And then we'd go up ten feet, another band clamp. And we did that for years. It's a problem. When you start doing stuff like that, then it needs to be slated to be replaced. So, I mean, this is my first time on the council and we're trying to do something about the issue. Something needs to be done. We can't just keep limping it along like this. It's, it's a mess. So, and it's our mess. So now we have a capital improvements plan. We did a level one water study. We want to start looking at our sewer infrastructure. We have projects out to twenty thirty-three, planned out to twenty thirty-three. So we're, they identified that areas that needed to be replaced or areas where we had water that was stagnating, so we needed to make a loop. You know, we, we have a plan now. And unfortunately, part of the plan is trying to figure out a way to fund it. And, and that's where, where the rates come in. And, you know, everybody's hurting. All of us on the council are gonna be paying the same water bill that everybody else in town is. I, I can't speak to being on a fixed income, but I have a big family and it's hard to live right now. We, you know, I'm not relishing the fact that I'm gonna have to pay a little bit more on my water bill, but I'm happy to do it because I know the problems that we have. I, I've worked on it. So anyway, because I have a good enough answer for you, Mark. But, thank you.
Councilman Owens is right. Seventh Avenue, we dug it up and replaced that water source through water mains. Pile of PVC from repairs is as big as the AC pipe piled next to it. We found six more breaks in the pipes that we didn't even know were there. We've been recording our breaks since two thousand, so twenty-four years. We knew of seven breaks on Seventh Avenue, but we've, like I said, we found six others that we weren't even aware of. Delaware Avenue, we've got a section of pipe shut off because it looks like this and we can't turn it back on until it's replaced. That water meter was shut off in twenty twenty-one. We installed an isolation valve so everybody else can stay and water except for short days.
Cost of everything?
Yeah, the cost of everything has gone up for us as well as everybody else. Before COVID, a two-inch water meter cost an inch or about a thousand dollars per inch, so two thousand dollars. We could very much bank on that. Let's say water meter today is over forty-five hundred dollars. When we start looking at our control belts, When we start looking at our control belts, the cost of those has gone up as much as 150% if we have to replace it. Our parts to keep everything running has gone up significantly. These breaks are costing more money because the pipe costs more, the parts cost more. Plus the breaks are no longer like, as Councilman Owens said, where we put a bandage clamp around it or the next, wait for the next one. Those days are over. We haven't installed a bandage clamp. What, one in the last three years, four years? What we're replacing eight times a year is around 20 feet of pipe. It's, unfortunately, it's just gotten to that point. Our infrastructure has aged out. This council is trying to come up with a plan moving forward to take care of this problem as much as we can. Our water master plan, they wanted us to spend double what we already. They wanted us to do $80 million worth of projects in the next 10 years, not 46. Our water tank, Fund 85, I don't know if anybody knows, but that thing's been in service since 1934. Last time we sandblasted and recoded the tank, we had to weld 404 patches inside to keep it going before we recoded it. It's time for replacement. Tank two, we've got water quality issues that come up with that one from time to time. So we're having to design a $2.1 million project to deal with that. Landfills are a huge expense. Unfortunately, when we did landfill two, we wanted to keep it open. City wanted us to continue on with our own landfill. State wanted the city to go to a regional landfill and sweeten the pot by being able, by saying they would pay for 75% of the closure if we closed our landfill. But that was back in 2016. Price has increased such amount that, yeah, we were looking at a $2.2 million project and making, spending 25% of that to pay for it. Now that same project, $6 million. Our 2025 improvements project originally was a $2.1 million. That's what I requested on the pre-application in January, was $2.1 million to fund that project. We just recently, right before the public hearing on that project, engineers went back and looked at the prices again. That price went up $300,000 from January to now. If we can put these projects off, we can keep digging up pipes and spending 20 hours or the time for four to six of us. And we can continue to destroy the streets in the process because the water gets in there and then it can evaporate after we get done. Or we can spend our money, instead of trying to replace these pipes 20 feet at a time, replace sections of it that will benefit the city in the long run. This isn't anything the council wanted to entertain. They didn't want to do this. I hope I'm not speaking out of turn for the council. But we're at a point, we're at a critical point in the system. We've been replacing certain mains each year. We just probably weren't replacing enough of them. They were trying to keep the cost down fast, is what they were trying to do. But we're at a point when we see nothing but that every time we dig, then what do we do?
In addition to the weekly printed version of the newsletter journal, we also promote our community and share important information on our award-winning website, newslj.com, and in our weekly email newsletter, New Canow. We also connect with readers through various social media platforms and invite you to check us out on Facebook, Twitter, and Instagram. You can even take a look at a recent meeting of the city council, school board, or county commission on our YouTube channel. We do hope that you will go to newslj.com and subscribe today and we look forward to making all of our great content available to you. But regardless of your level of support, we thank you from the bottom of our hearts for doing your part to preserve a free and independent local press.
They were trying to keep the cost down fast, is what they were trying to do. But we're at a point when we see nothing but that every time we dig, then what do we do? The reason for this is to hear your voice, your opinion. The council is listening. Sorry, apologize, sir.
I've been living in Newcastle for 60 of my last 90 years and I've seen a few changes in it. I've served on the council for two terms and I can take credit for having a pump installed on well number one. Before that, it was pressure feed up to the tank, which reduced the flow considerably. However, I suppose I should take blame for a lot of the situation today because back in the 70s, we didn't see it coming. There was, water was pretty cheap in then and there wasn't a lot of, it didn't have near the lines that we do now but the city was smaller. But the city was built when there was lots of wanting to. And during the war, there was a lot of expenditure that were not really the best could be done, but they were expedient for the situation. But I think we have to realize that we do need to do these things. We've got to have them, otherwise the city dries up, blows away. I tell people that say we pay too much property tax. I said, how much is too much? Is it your life? You've got to have money. This state is 130 years old in incorporated or constitution. The towns in this, in this state are well over 100 years old. Newcastle is not the only one that's having a problem. And I've done what little I can do to try to get to people and alternative fundraising for. We have a lot of mineral income and we've squandered a lot of it. We've tried to live off that without taxing people. Our taxes are much lower than any place else you go. You look at people in South Dakota, taxes that they're paying is way out of sight of what we pay here on houses and property tax and everything else. Granted, it's hard for people, but that's the way life is when you get older. I can tell you. It's, there is no alternative. You can either pay it or we don't. Thank you.
I do have a question for you, but before I do, let me kind of tell you my situation. First of all, I don't live in Newcastle, but I want you all to know that we're feeling the same in the shorts as you all are. I only live 4.2 miles outside of town on North Highway 85. Now, my water went up 36% with Cambria because they supposedly get their water from Newcastle. Okay, so we feel that in the shorts. Now I get my septic to $100 more this year because Newcastle's charging him to charge, or charging him more to drop off what he pumps out of my tank into your recycle or the sewer. And now a landfill is the next thing, which I kind of, I kind of get because my trash lady picks up my trash every month, you know? And she's talking about increase because her rates are increasing. So we don't even live in the city limits, but we're affected. I don't benefit from the pipes and the plumbing. I will benefit from the roads. I come into town like all the rest of you. I get gas, I get groceries, I go to Ace Hardware, wherever you want to look at. Now I'll benefit from roads. And I guess I take it I will benefit from this, you know, landfill because my trash goes to that same landfill as all you folks here in town. But I guess what I'm trying to understand is why would you have a 36% increase in water unless our pipes are being replaced from the city of Newcastle to Cambria's water tanks? Is that, is that something that's included in this? I'm just kind of curious.
What people have to understand outside of the city, I live in Salt Creek Water District. You do receive water from the pumping station, from four of the five wells. Water leaves our area where we have our city of a works department. There are three of the main wells right there and one up by the tank number one on 85. Water leaves our area, goes up to tank one. Then it goes up to green tank above the honor camp, then it goes to Cambria. We, what was it, EPA changed their rules 2020. We ended up having to do a $40,000 change to tank number three, a $10,000 change to tank number one. Tank number one needs replaced. Tank number three needs maintenance.
Those tanks key Cambria?
Yep. That water comes from well number one in four and five. Goes up to tank, goes through the pump station by our public works department, up to tank number one. From there, it goes out into the system. The only part that isn't normally fed from tank number one is the avenues. Section of town we have well number two that produces water to that area. When the water leaves, then we have a pumping station at tank number one that pumps the water up to tank three. So essentially, yes, you are benefiting from, from the improvements. Our part of our O and M plan that we looked at when we started this, our pumps are getting to the age that need to be replaced. They're a 20-year pump. We put them in in '03. It's $160,000 to replace the pumps and the drives. The pumping station at tank number one, shoot, I built that the first year I worked for the city in 97. We haven't replaced the pumps yet or the drives. Everything is obsolete in it. I can't find the parts I need now, other than the spare parts we have right now. So those are in the plan to be replaced. We're looking at about $100,000 to replace those two pipes and drives.
Pipe's coming from those pumps to the Cambria tanks. Are those in BJ or is that something?
Actually, the line going out was originally Cambria's and the city assumed it when they built the honor camp and number three. So Cambria's system starts at a line coming off of tank number three up to their pumping station. And they were installed in 1981. Typically PVC pipe, we're looking at a 75 to 100-year pipe. Problem is the fittings. We also have to look at the age of the fittings that go in and goes into the system. And in our future planning, that's part of what the reserves are for and other things is future replacements. So the city doesn't end up in this situation.
Okay, so that pipe's going to, it's also included down the road?
Yeah, probably. In our water main inventory, what we did is we inventoried all our bikes. We looked at all the ages to keep this current to the current year. Then we looked at the age of bikes and decided what needs to be done for it is part of the reason we look at that. So we have looked at our inventories and our assets and started building the plans for asset management. We utilized the, what do they call it, GIS, it's a geographic information system, so we can track throughout the years when a pipe was installed, how it was installed, where it was installed, this sort of thing. Unfortunately, this list has more zeros and minuses on it than it does positives. And that's what we're talking about. We still have 50% of the system. In the 1960s, they replaced 80,000 feet of pipe. We've already replaced 80,000 feet of pipe and looking at the next 80,000 feet of pipe.
Thank you for answering my question. I appreciate it, Kevin.
I'll try to keep you brief. I just had a, I came in late, sorry. So if I'm going to kind of duplicate any questions, I apologize. What, when we do all these costs that are associated with the replacement of the infrastructure, are we doing that as a city council or is the city of Newcastle doing those repairs? Or are we contracting that out?
It depends on the project. Typically, the larger projects we contract out because we just don't have the staff for it. If we did for a few years, tried to do our own replacements, Birch Street from First Avenue to, what was it, Carter Avenue, 1174 feet of pipe, we replaced that ourselves. We also did a replacement on West Walcott, portion of East Walcott, South Sumner, East, West Wentworth, and West and East Winthrop. What we found out is all the rest of our maintenance work went to the wayside trying to do those. We're behind on our maintenance now by about five years. So yes, we did try and do it ourselves, but unfortunately, unless we want the members again to hire more people and do it ourselves, we can't. But we also lose out on the possibility of funding.
Okay, it's understandable. And I just wanted to express, you know, obviously, I think we kicked this can down the road too far. Okay, and I agree, you know, we need to fix it. How do we fix it? We need more money. So, okay, now it comes down to a matter of how much and how can we do it? So I don't want to sound like, I don't know, I guess the word, but I like to think outside of the box sometimes. And, you know, what kind of out of the box thinking has the council maybe brought up, discussed? I haven't, I haven't been to a single meeting yet. My wife and I, we own a laundromat. When our bill doubled, it was like, ah, okay, you know, that kind of puts pressure on them. So has there been any kind of out of the box thinking like, okay, I'm glad you're like, you guys, you're doing it great, doing a lot of the work that you can in-house, you know, that's reassuring? You know, what other costs are there associated, obviously, in federal government? You know, we're going to, like you said, match 25% of the landfill project and then we get the grant money from the federal. What kind of strings, I mean, is it just, you know, I guess what I'm trying to ask, my question is, if we cut out the grants and we think and we can maybe do more community-based repairs, you know, are there any benefits to that? Like, can we cut out like environmental studies? Do we need to do like, you know, hire engineers to do hydrology reports? Because it's not like we're going to put in a different diameter pipe. I mean, the design's there already. I mean, we're not like increasing our diameter. Are we going to have to do those hydrology reports? Or do we have to submit environmental, you know, studies? Do, you know, if we don't take the federal grant money, what kind of, you know, what kind of other options are there? Is there something?
So with hydrology, part of our water master plan, they actually looked and modeled our whole system. We do have some pipes that we need to increase size on and that was all built into the water master plan. It didn't cost the city anything, but our employees' times to help them and work with them during this process of water master plan. So yes, that's been studied. Unfortunately, there's no funding for sewer other than SRF funding. When we looked at the costs we spent on the last project, which was East Wentworth, Winthrop, and South Sumner project, we saved the city around, at that time, this is 2016, so it was pretty cold. At that time, with the equipment we had to rent because we didn't have enough equipment to do the work and do our other stuff too, we did not save very much on that project of hiring a contractor. Plus we lost that on maintenance for, well, actually it was two years. Yeah, that project was over a two-year period. So there's a trade-off. Do we not continue with our maintenance work and then install lines and save 5%, 10% on the project? Or do we let a contractor do it? The other side of funding, in one of the grant writing classes I was in, they don't like teaching us because we're infrastructure, we have a ton of rules. You touched on it with the environmental reviews, things like that. I didn't, I basically did all the environmental reviews. I sent everything in, we're doing all that in-house to save from having a contract engineer do it. Because I'm paid one wage, they're paid $195 an hour. So if we can do that in-house, we do. The other thing we did, SRF loans start out at 2.5%. There are different things we can do to lower that interest. And on the 2025 improvements project with the stuff we did to lower the interest, we took the interest down from 2.5% to 1% on a $2.1 million project. Any opportunity I have for. Any opportunity I have for grant funds, state or federal, I will go after. It saves money to the city. Fortunately, I was awarded, or the city was awarded after I had applied for it, an MRC grant of $1 million. So our 2025 improvements project is going to cost us $1.1 million. We'll be paying 75% to 1.1, not the 2.1. A lot of that stuff we do in-house, where and when we can save money. But we did see that when we did, like, we did the actual digging work in-house, it, it cost us, I mean, we, we definitely paid for it in the long run with our maintenance. Yeah, so we're trying to...
I, I like, I like to hear the fact that, you know, we're, you know, there was some initiative taken on, you know, saving some money. It's, it's kind of reassuring to hear that. I'm going to, me personally, I'm going to try to be more present in some of these discussions that we're having in the future. I think it's important. And I guess one last thing, when we, when that new landfill opens, just walk here. You know, before it was $6 a pound. Is that, is there going to be rate increases for that? I didn't notice.
You'll have to ask them. They haven't even told me yet. They haven't set their tipping fees yet. In the MOG or in the study, since we didn't have what they were going to charge. So going from running our own landfill to paying somebody else to run a landfill, we're going to be paying the same tipping fees as anybody else pulls in that, pulls across those scales. We had to look at what, what price they were going to charge. They couldn't tell us, they weren't going to tell us, they still haven't. We did it based on our rate currently at $120 a ton. If our tipping fees are lower, then we could potentially lower in solid ways. But without knowing what their rate's going to be, because we, we dump around 18,000 pounds of garbage a day within a city. We dump 300 to 400 garbage cans each day, five days a week. Without knowing how much that, that was going to cost, we had to go off of what we're paying now. So there is potential for decrease in that. Once we're done with landfills, then it's mainly keeping up our maintenance on our vehicles. Unfortunately, our garbage truck was last year, cost us $40,000 in repairs. Bring your set, bring your ten. That's the reason we're replacing it. We're looking to replacing it earlier so we don't have so many repairs to do at year eight, nine, and 10.
Thanks for answering my questions.
There any further comments or questions? The city council is seated up here, most of them. Some of them couldn't make it tonight. They have heard what you've said. They do take it to heart. It is in their answer to make the decision. So that's why we, that's why they wanted to hold this so they could hear what everybody had to say. So everybody had a chance to speak up. So we do appreciate you coming. And if there's no other questions, we'll close this meeting.